Planning Commission meeting to order at six thirty four P M. Roll call please.
Commissioner Sarazus Banister.
Present.
Um Commissioner Rivera present. My share person Harvey.
Present.
And as I understand uh chairperson Hammeras uh will not be here tonight. And I think we are expecting Commissioner. But we can go through some home and everything.
Okay. Um let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Rivera, who would be?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Or no adjustments to to the agenda.
Uh public appearances for matters not appearing on the agenda. Um if you wish to address the planning commission concerning any item not appearing on the agenda and within the commission's jurisdiction. Please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the chairperson and at that time state your name and address for the record. The chairperson reserves the right to place a time limit on each person's presentation of three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to the commission in writing. Is there anyone here that would like to discuss matters not appearing on the agenda? No? Okay. So we'll go ahead and continue to um agenda item C one work session California Home Act Senate Bill nine.
Good evening Commissioners um and members of the public at tonight. Uh in tonight's meeting, we're gonna have a a quick presentation on on S B nine. Um Senate Bill uh was signed into law back in September twenty twenty one and it became effective in January first twenty twenty two. So uh we just wanna give you a a a brief overview of of what's going on within the city. And and I'm sure that you you um been asked a lot about this. Uh and someone you may be knowledgeable, but I just wanna make sure that that we all on the same page. And we can provide uh uh information that is very accurate to to the citizens of Imperial. So um S B nine. So in brief um S B nine promotes um small scale residential development. By streamlining the process for for homeowners um to create a duplex or subdivide an existing lot. Um what's required under S B nine um two homes on a single family residential parcel. And uh allows them to do a a lot split and this is a one time subdivision of an existing single family residential parcel. Which parcels are affected by S B nine. So uh the qualifying criteria for this is that it must be within a single family residential zone. Um and the only exceptions it are if um they're they have an environmental if they're within an environmental sensitive areas and they may have an environmental hazard areas. Also, they're um have historic properties in districts. And additionally to that, um the demolition is generally not permitted for rental units or deed restricted rental units. So what can we build under our current law? Um this is without S B nine. So under our current law law uh within the city of Imperial. You are able to build a one um primary dueling unit. One accessory dueling unit which is known as an A D U also known as a granny flat. And a one junior accessory dueling unit J A D U for a total of three housing units. So um to clarify a little bit uh that the primary dueling unit. It's your your house uh within your your residential zone. Be twelve to hundred square feet, twenty two hundred square feet or or whatever the uh the lock the maximum lock coverage is. The A D U which is your granny flat is usually uh it could be take attached. But most most likely will be detached. It's a it's a it's a house, it's a it's a it's actually a home. Um your A T U but you have limitations, you you're not able to build an A T U more than twelve hundred square feet. And then you have your J A D U. So J A D U are contained within the dueling unit. Um well, it will be if you're enclosing a garage and the limitations would be five hundred square feet max. So enclosing the garage, that's a unit A D U which will have a kitchen. Uh uh may or may not have a a bathroom facility. So you have to have a fa- bathroom facility, but if you have accessing to the home to the bathroom facility. You don't are not required to have it within the J A D U. So are those are the three distinctions under our current law. Can only build three units total. And and if you have any questions, you can stop me at any time. Dennis.
Mention a conversion of as off street. At a garage. Um to help meet that off street parking requirement. Th- this S B nine would permit the conversion of that garage to a li- living unit?
This one here, it's our current law, but it's the same thing, it's applicable to S B nine as well. Um so under our current law, you don't have to, if you build a J A D U. A garage, you do a garage conversion, you don't have to provide parking. Under S B nine, if you uh build your units uh for units. You don't have to provide parking if you're with located within half a mile of a transit facility. Now, if you're not within the the range, then you have to provide parking, so.
When that's just a current law, that was the law before S B nine, is that what?
If you would, that is correct, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we in 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 that case and then and we still uh we we still have that law. I mean people don't wanna do, they they don't wanna go through the S B nine process cuz it's a little bit, it's fairly complicated. But under our current law, which you know, if you wanna do a junior A D U, you do a garage conversion. You don't have to provide parking before that um um before becoming state law. Um you, if you wanna do a garage conversion, you will have to provide a two car parking garage. So if you eliminate the two car garage, you will have to provide the same. So those were the limitations within our residential zones. But uh state law um came into effect and they say parking requirements are not required anymore. If you do a J A D U. I don't know if I'm making myself clear, but.
Mentioned about the option to do the S B nine process, so then is that optional? Or is that automatically applies to all Imperial residents?
No, it it is an option. Um you will have to submit an application, we'll review the application that you wanna uh build uh four units under S B nine and then we'll go through the process. So this is and and I'm I'm gonna talk a little bit about that in the next slide. So this one's under current law, it's three units total.
I'm gonna ask you a question about the current law.
Yes.
Um in regards to the granny flat, you said no more than twelve hundred square feet.
Correct.
Depending on the side of size of the lot. If it's a smaller lot, would the max on the granny flat be less based on like percentage covered on the actual property?
Not that, that's the exception under the state law. Um if you you don't meet the the uh uh lock coverage, you still be able to do the twelve hundred square feet. Yes, that's that's what we have currently. So under S B nine, so you have a couple options. Now under S B nine, you are able to do four units. And that's a combination of how you are able to achieve the four units. And then when I said four units, um people get confused, I think it's a it's a all of them are four houses, four units, so. And that's why that's that there's a distinction there. That says uh an A D U, a residential facility and a junior A D U. And it's similar for um lots being subdivided. Homeowners can build two homes on each of the two new lots, allowing them for a total of four units. If there's an existing unit, new homes can be added to result in a maximum of four potential units. However, a jurisdiction may choose to allow more units, A D Us and junior A D Us. Um this 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 law, it's a little bit complicated. Um uh under staff level will not recommend to um increase the number of units allowed within the property. Um cuz we don't know what the actual effect in the community is yet. So we wanna we wanna keep it as what we have. Um we comply with state law and then we'll see uh how it works. Um of course, uh we want more units because we wanna uh meet our arena numbers, which we are short. Um but we wanna be very careful uh as to what steps do we do we take. Um so we get the hang of it, we'll see how how will affect. And and if decided or recommended, uh we we might increase, we might recommend increasing the the number of units within a within a lot. That's just an as an option. So that's um with the lots being subdivided. So you have, you know, empty lots or um a single family home um splitting it into two lots. Those two options also give you the four total housing units. And also it it's it's um a lot to take in, um it's a little confusing. Um but luckily, we have um in our office um available to the public, we have the potential development scenarios. Uh checklist um that you see there. Um and that gives you a better understanding. I say I um I provided the information, I I understand it. Um but I think that uh will give uh clarity to to the residents of of Imperial. Um that way you see how many units and how to achieve that. So you have a vacant lot. Um lot with single family homes. Um a lot with a non-conforming duplex. And a lot with a single family home and an A D U. Each scenario still be able to give you a total of four units.
The J A D U does not count as a housing.
It it ca- counts as a unit.
That it counts as one of those four units?
It counts towards the four units, correct. And 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 we have that available to the public. Um uh before having that, I'm trying to explain homeowners how to how to achieve four units. It was very complicated, but then this came out and it's it's very clear, very self explanatory. Uh and it's got a a a lot of scenarios. We have um also an S B nine fact sheet that we we can provide to to everyone. We have the A D U handbook and then we can always sit with the the residents and explain it. Each lot, it's unique, each lot it's different. We highly recommend everyone to talk to your local planning department. Um cuz it gets complicated and and maybe the interpretation on 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 other cities are different than interpretation in the city of Imperial.
Why would um a property owner choose, what would be the benefits to them doing a lot split versus just since they can put all four on one lot, just keeping it whole?
Um so benefits, I I I would say, you still, I mean, you're restricted, you're deed restricted, you're not able to do any in match with with the property. You, I I believe you're blocked uh for three years, you're not able to sell the property. Um but I I do believe that after three years, you you you'd be able to sell those 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 homes.
Okay.
Um that I I think that could be one of the benefits of yeah. Um having a separation, I I don't ha- I don't, I really don't have the answer other than uh for investment.
Otton, it's also, yeah, I was gonna say for financial reasons. Banks will sometimes do it on a lot split, but not on one property.
Yeah, and 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 one of the things that keep in mind, the it it is, it benefits homeowners. Um not the institutional investors. Um you have some restrictions, so uh when the bill um came out. Um some developers um jumped right away. They all wanted to do four units in in one of the part um their parcels, but you have the limitations. We we um we can impose um an owner occupancy, we can do, we can do that. And um and the this bill prohibits the uh minister approval uh on adjacent parcels by the same owner. So that is, that is good. It's 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 to limit that, it's to benefit the homeowners, not not the big inv- investors. So um the original housing need alloc- needs allocation. So as you may already know, we are short in the city a thousand six hundred and one units. S B nine units may count uh for the purpose of the housing element arena numbers. Um we don't know either what type of methodology is it's 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 going to be. Um and and it may it and it could be that in the future, it will be based on, you know, actual trends. Um but H C V has been given a a clear path of how's that uh gonna benefit in our numbers. So hopefully, we can give you an answer in in a couple in the next couple months.
Is A D U the same thing as E D U?
E D U, no, so A, that's your dual dueling unit. You mean the A D E D U?
What is E D U?
The um you're talking about for capacity?
Maybe I'm thinking A D U then, I'm I'm.
Yeah, the yeah, the A D U and then we have the um um the E D Us for, so we can count towards the um so we can charge developers for the impact fees and the capacity fees and all of that.
Okay.
And uh some of the key actions and decisions uh will be to to implement an ordinance. Um one of in in in, you know, come up with design standards and some of all the uh obje- objective zoning. Um like I mentioned before, you if you do an enclosure, before you do a a garage enclosure. And you will able to um tell the homeowner to enforce uh uh an ordinance saying that you have to provide a garage. So you you had those those limitations. Now, you don't have to provide parking. Uh but our our zoning says that if you don't have parking, you are able to build a carport up to the property line. So uh when you start thinking about uh what kind of design standards we wanna we wanna impose and 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 whatnot. We wanna beautify the city. Um do we wanna uh allow them um to build, you know, to be all exposed? Do we want it to be um all stucco and whatnot? So those are the things that 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 we need to take a look at. Um also, we we have the application forms uh and we have um our checklist. Um it is, it is pretty extensive. Under S B nine, we had meetings, multiple meetings with with developers and and homeowners and and it and we only done two of them in these two years. Most of the people um they say that it's too complicated. Um which is, which it is, it's a lengthy process. Um and then and and the cost associated for to do a lot split, you have to hire a land surveyor and and whatnot. Um but but it's working. Uh we just had to um did restrict it, everything went good, smooth. And hopefully, we see more of this. And do we have any questions? Dennis?
Prior slide reference in implementing ordinance. Ha- have have you made any determination as to whether or not you would recommend any ordinances uh to the planning commission?
The the we we're looking at it, it's development standards on our design standards, that's what we wanna uh bring to the to the commission. Uh in not increasing the number of of the units within a lot yet. Cuz we don't really know what the real impact of S B nine is or will be. Um so we gotta give it a little bit of time, but um the the ordinance and that we need that we need to take a look at would be the design standards.
How's switching?
Um we we'll start with with feedback from that community. Um when you start um getting um four units in in a single lot. And you're within half of um transit facility. And so you're not required to have parking for them, so they're gonna be parking where on the street, on the, you know, side streets and whatnot. Um so that's that's the the f- the data that we're gonna be looking at. How will be impacting um the citizens? That's mainly what we're looking at, uh complaints, of course, um and then see how it goes. This has been in uh, we've been doing this, what, did you say two years? Yes, so it's been so since twenty twenty two, January twenty twenty two. So, oh my God, no, it's not, then, so here's some change, I'm sorry. Um but um we've only processed and completed two. Uh we had multiple meetings with different uh with some developers who wanted to take advantage of of that and and residents as well. Um but like I mentioned before, um they looked at it and it was too complicated for for them to move forward. So they stayed with the three units. Some people would just stay with the J A D U and and the house. Um so it's working that way. We we ha- actually, we had an increase in junior A D Us, everyone's enclosing their garage. There's there's a lot of building permits coming through the city. Um but we haven't received any um any complaints. We haven't received ma- major complaints about parking yet. So we're just collect waiting to collect that data.
Developers?
What was that?
You mentioned.
He's a he's a major developer, um but he purchased um two lots within the old town of Imperial. Um but yeah, he's a major develop, but he asked about his his development. Um but I told him that was that we had restrictions uh about the last plate and him being the same owner. Um so that person purchased those two and uh and you know, successful, build them and that's it.
Uh Mr. Otton, I I I gotta commend you guys slowly stepping into this. You said that you guys have been taking on a case by case and and kind of slowly stretching your legs on it. I I commend you on that, I think my only concern in this is um the density uh in certain areas. Uh I think, you know, uh we may see this in areas where we already have a dense population. And and that's where we may see that continue to grow. Um that's my own concern, but again, w- we'll have to wait and see what the what the community says, like you said. Uh what's the, what is there an average cost or is that quite variable depending on the project?
Um cost associated with building permit process or?
Yeah.
What is the cost for the like the S B application and that process?
The S B application for the lot splits eight hundred and thirty five dollars. Um the building permit for that, for a house. Uh it would be around nine thousand to twelve thousand dollars. Including uh impact fees and capacity fees as well. Um junior A D U, they um uh or junior J A D Us, they don't pay impact fees and and um capacity fees.
I I think uh in the onset here in the last year and a half, uh maybe it's it's been slow cuz everybody's kinda digesting this. Uh but I think here in we will see it probably pick up here in the next year, two years.
It probably will, um one of the things that we need to take a look, it's the new development coming up. Um eh this is, um there's some exceptions uh for sequel for S B nine. But when we when we go through the same through the process. Um I think that we need to account the density, the future density that that may they may bring. Not just what what they're proposing. Um so new development, I think it's it's it was gonna be key that we make sure that we incorporate um S B nine within their documents.
If a developer was to come forward and wanna do this for ten lots. As a developer, would that be ten separate applications or would that be?
It would be, that is correct. Each property come with their own um separate application.
Okay.
I thought I read some work. Doing this on
Correct.
So developer could buy ten lots and do this on ten lots, right?
If they're, yeah, adjacent to each other, no. But if they have ten different applications, but you know, one every other house. Uh then they may have the ability to to go through the S B nine. Um but uh as of now, once we we have explained uh the process of each application. Um they just say, forget it, we're not going through that uh motion. Um they just say forget it. We're not going through that uh motion.
I have an idea. Talking about next steps and the implementing ordinance, kind of us making some assessments prior to providing a staff recommendation on how we should proceed. Um or bring in an ordinance for. Do you have an idea as far as uh timeline? Or or maybe set milestones that you're looking for first before doing so?
Um we want to, we haven't had the meeting yet. Uh we have some samples or or of the design standards that we wanna bring to the plan commission. Um uh we're a little bit short staff right now. Um but in in late summer, I wanna be able to bring something uh to the commission so we can start the dialogue. Uh what are uh the new requirements would be for the new development standard? Not only S B nine, but some other uh items that we need we need to uh amend within the zoning ordinance. But you know, I'm 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 expecting to bring um the item uh by the end of summer.
Right now, do we? Do you have physical? I mean, this I assume this isn't on the website yet. Do you have physical, you know?
Yeah, I we have physicals and I do believe it should be on our website. Uh it should be. If it's not, I will upload it right away. Um uh but yeah, a lot of people, once they see it as a couple pages, they usually just. Um set up a meeting, which we're always available for them and we go um a step by step.
Yeah, I as least at least for me, I just wanna be able to to see it, uh digest it so I can be a little more competent. Uh in it when you bring it uh later in the summer.
I also make a request for a copy of the.
All all the you need.
Oh, not at this time. Uh like I said, is I'm I'm gonna dig through through the documentation. Um so I can ask some half decent questions on it. Um I would just wanna compare what we have now or what we've been working with. And and specifically S B nine. Uh and like I said, my my concerns is the uh the density uh in certain areas. Uh for some reason, I just picture um this really taking effect into areas where we're already um dancing. Um and just. Yeah, just I always think of the worst case scenario, so I apologize. Um I I'll read the documentation.
Uh we all we all have questions. Um I I mean, we have we have multiple meetings with residents and developers. But every time we have a meeting, why we have to go read through this whole whole package again just to have a, you know. Very good understanding of what we're talking about. It's very complicated. It it's 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 link. It's a lengthy process.
And and my my thing is, like I said, I I I would expect right now the developers are slow uh out of the gates. Uh but once once they get a firm understanding of this. Um but they may want to take full advantage of it. Um so i- it's one of those where I I think we need to definitely get a good grip and understanding of this, so.
Have anything?
No, nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you. Um okay, so with that, we'll move on to reports. And um we'll start with the city manager in your reports.
Yes, nothing to report from me.
Um staff?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, commissioners, start with um Commissioner Rivera.
I I'd like to start with the with our new commissioner over there.
I'm I'm good. Uh just I appreciate the update. Uh this is all part of a learning process. I'm I'm I actually like that we're doing these workshops. Uh it's helping me as we are transitioning into this, so it's a little bit slower transition than just jumping right in to the deep end, so. Thank you, that's it.
Uh Miss Brazes Baxter, I wanna welcome you. This is uh my first meeting with you. Uh welcome aboard. Um uh I actually I do um. Where are my notes? Uh I had brought something up about traffic in the morning on Clark and um Nuevo Vallarta. Um I've been a. A bit. We've had some breaks. I've been a a bit distracted with some things. Um I wanna take that up. Uh I'll come back uh you know here in the next couple of weeks. Um I wanna monitor that a a little and talk to the residents in that area about their concern. Um they said. Just excessive speeding during school hours. Um I wanna do a little legwork. Um I did not forget about them in case anybody's wondering. Um and I'll bring that up with a little more detail and understanding it's to um what the concern is. Um. There are just a couple of things I wanna highlight uh today. Um happy Mexican Mother's Day to all the moms. Uh and uh and happy Mother's Day to to all the moms in general uh on Sunday. Um I I think. There's no words. There there's no words when you're talking about moms, so um God bless them. Uh. This week, this week is a correction, uh correctionals, uh Correctional Officer Appreciation Week. I I wanna say thank you uh to those. Specifically in the in the community that we live in, we are uh we have so many correctional officers. I I myself have spent almost twenty years in some way uh in that profession. Um so it is near and dear to me. Um and then uh May twentieth Armed Forces Day. We obviously will pick up the following week, so I just wanna remind everybody of our Armed Forces Day. Um but I guess, you know, today without without a doubt Mexican Mother's Day. And uh thank you to all the moms. God bless. Love you guys. Um that's all I got. Um city wise, uh I need to get back on track and and we'll handle business here in the coming weeks.
I have nothing to report tonight, so um with that being said. We'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at seven oh seven until the next regularly scheduled meeting. May twenty fourth, twenty twenty three at six thirty P M.